Okay, Amy, can you hear me?
Well, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Frazier City Council's special virtual meeting for Thursday, May 6th at 4:00 PM. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Thompson, would you mind calling order or call? I'm sorry, call, roll call, please.
Member Baranski.
President, Frazier, Michigan.
Member Blankey.
Here.
Find your location, too, please.
I don't know. Okay.
Say City Hall.
City Hall, sorry.
Mayor Carnegie.
President, City Hall.
Member Calca.
Miss Calca is absent today.
Member Lessig.
Here, Frazier, Michigan.
Member Shornack.
Here, Frazier, Michigan.
Member Winawiki.
President, Frazier, Michigan.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Calca for tonight's meeting for a family obligation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Thompson, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Cal, uh, member, uh, excuse me, member Blankey, uh, member Carnegie.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornack.
Yes.
Uh, member Winawiki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item four, at this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on that motion? Mr. Thompson, could you please call a vote?
Member Baranski.
Yes.
Member Blankey.
Yes.
Mayor Carnegie.
Yes.
Member Lessig.
Yes.
Member Shornack.
Yes.
Member Winawiki.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item six, request for council action. Tonight, we're doing interviews at this time. And item eight, interview candidates for the city manager's position. And at 4:00 PM, we have Elaine Levin. At this time, Amy Sell. Lieutenant, could you let her into the room and?
Good evening, here in council. I'm pleased to introduce you to Elaine Levin and look forward to you getting to know her better through this interview. I will be trying to manage the clock a little bit because I know we have a packed agenda, so we're gonna be having this conversation until 4:40 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Elaine, how are you tonight?
Hi, I'm good. How is everyone doing?
Doing well. Thank you for participating tonight. We appreciate you taking the time and coming in for the interview. And if you would like to start off, just tell us a little bit about yourself, hobbies, your interests, or anything that you'd like to share with this council.
Sure, sure. So I got my undergrad and my master's in public administration from Oakland University. One of the things that I really like doing is helping people, and I think that's kind of how I fell into the field of government. I was fortunate enough to be hired by someone that saw potential in me and really took me under his wing and taught me everything that he knew when I was in Oakland Township. I, at the time, had been also working in planning and zoning when I decided I was ready to spread my wings and take my chance as a manager. Marine City was generous enough to take me on and take a risk with me. It's been a very good opportunity for me. And now I'm ready really to take things to the next level and get into a community that is a little more urban and has more opportunity. And I'm very excited about this opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Some hobbies, I guess. I, I live on the water, so I'm a boater and married. My husband works for GM. And we have a cat that is a super senior.
Wow, good. Okay, why Frazier? Why, what, you've looked into Frazier, researched any Frazier? Why would you like to come to the city of Frazier?
I have. So one of the things that really appeals to me about Frazier is it's a lot like communities that I've lived in when I was growing up. My dad was an engineer for GM and then Ingersoll Rand. We moved around quite a bit when I was younger. And Frazier is really the same kind of community that I lived in, in multiple states, where it's, it's a tight-knit residential community for the most part. But then has that, that appeal of having some of the, the restaurants and businesses that aren't too far away. A couple of the communities that I lived in, they were walkable communities where we were able to go walk to a shopping center, go walk to any type of parks or anything. I know that Frazier's been working on making it a more walkable community. I took a look at your master plan and I applaud your efforts for that. Given the community and the makeup there, I see that as a great next step for, for Frazier, along with the park improvements that you have coming soon.
Good. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to other council members for their questions or comments, and we'll go from there. Councilwoman Amy Baranski.
Hello, Elaine. Is it all right if I call you Elaine?
Yes, no problem.
Excellent. And please call me Amy. Um, just, I, we have looked at a lot of information and we appreciate you doing the video and, and the telephone questions and the online questions. So I'll try to not be repetitive. Can you highlight for me, though, what your management style is? Not in a general sense, but really in the nuts and bolts. When you're in it, how do you handle? How do you handle the crises? How do you handle the good, the bad, the ugly?
So for me, communication is the most important thing. You can't really achieve things just by working through email. You need to have the one-on-one personal interaction with the department heads. I've started doing monthly or bimonthly department meetings with our department heads. I've found that bringing everyone together and getting feedback from everyone is better, not just for me, but also for the entire group and ultimately for the community. I recognize that some department heads need a lot of oversight and some are able to independently work on their own. So I'm able to adapt to the needs of, of the people. Certainly, working together is, is number one and communication, as I said.
Excellent. Can you tell me or highlight some of the creative things you've done in Marine, Marine City to allow you to have that, that surplus? As you highlighted in your balance each year since you've taken over that position?
So really, one of the first things that I did was I really followed around with all of my department heads to see what it is that they're doing, what challenges they have, what they do really from a day-to-day basis, what kind of cost savings things there can be in their departments, how to streamline things. When I first started in Marine City, the only capital improvement plan that they had was for DPW equipment. So that was a big shortfall that I realized that they really need to start working on capital improvement plans for the buildings, the grounds, the water, the sewer, the streets. And that's really a key factor that helps them to be able to plan and work with me on the budget for the future.
Excellent. And do you, in your review of our master plan and the, the things you discussed about parks improvements and other things you may have looked at in terms of researching the possibility of taking this job, have you identified any areas of opportunity that you would like, that you would see, you know, within your first 90 days in terms of this is what I propose for Frazier from the get-go? Or, oh, short or long term?
Um, there were definitely some things that I noted. One of the things I think is really transparency. You don't really have a lot on your website, which is kind of a challenge, I think, for a lot of the people in the community and probably board members as well. Taking a look at the board packets, I know that there is a good amount of information, but probably putting together some type of more general summary to be able to help commissioner or counselors make the decisions that they have to make. Other than that, I hadn't had much of a chance to take a look at your ordinances. I did have a pretty good background with planning and zoning when I was in Oakland Township, and that would be definitely one of the key places that I'd want to take a look at.
And finally, what do you see as your weaknesses in terms of being considered for this position? And how do you intend, if you were offered the position, to overcome those weaknesses?
Um, I guess I have a tendency to overanalyze things. And it, it helps right now because I have people that realize when I'm spending too much time trying to analyze something and to be able to step away from that and either take a break or look at the larger picture. Also, I have a tendency sometimes to get a little overanxious about things, certainly things like interviews, things like that. Over the last year, COVID has really helped me deal with that. I have kind of gotten involved with meditation through a couple of apps, and I've found that to be very helpful with dealing with anxiety.
Excellent. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I have, and I hope at the end, we may open it up for you to have questions of us. And please feel free to ask me any questions at the end. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Councilman Kathy Blankey, you're next.
Thank you. Hello, Elaine.
Yep, got it. Okay.
Thank you. Hi, Elaine.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Um, welcome to this interview, and it's nice to meet you. I just, you have the experience through Marine City. And if you could bring some of your water here, that would be nice to Frazier. I think, I think of all the things people always describe about the warmth in the community, the cohesiveness of the community. I do think we need some water, but other than that, there are plenty of other places. My question to you is, obviously, through your position, you have dealt with union and non-union groups of employees. And have you, have you negotiated contracts for the employees or did you call someone in for that task? Or how was that handled in Marine City?
So we have POAM for our police officers and Teamsters for our DPW. And I have negotiated both of those contracts on my own. Recently, I have pulled in my finance director to help with some of the issues because from the perspective of dealing with payroll and time and hours, there are some issues there that she's able to provide a little bit more help and insight for negotiating those contracts and how the impacts would be from, from her, her perspective. So I, I think that's been really helpful to bring another team leader in to be able to, to really help and, and make it a beneficial contract for the city.
Absolutely. Now, the city of Marine, of Marine City, you have, what, seven council people?
We do.
On, on your board there?
Yes.
Okay. What is your standard operating procedure in as much as, how would you handle a council member going, say, to the Department of Public Works and requesting something or asking for, you know, an opinion or a service or something? What is your policy on that? What do you have to say about sort of leapfrogging over yourself? How would you handle that?
So, so generally, conversations with department heads are great. Everybody likes to be able to share information. But when you get into issues regarding timing or projects or anything like that, you as, as a council are the ones that put the budget in place and the projects to really steer what the department heads are going to be doing. You know, they set up their schedule for the day, the week, the year, based on what's in that approved budget. So that's really the way that things should be handled. Customarily, when you have a council manager form of government, the way that it's set up is that council members come to the city manager. The city manager funnels things down to department heads. Kind of think of it like the hourglass, and the city manager is kind of the pinch point between the two. And that's how communications should, should take place between both groups. That way, you don't have any, any conflicts. You're not stepping away from the budget or anything like that. You, you're staying in line, staying focused, and really should be working with the priorities that the city council sets.
Well, that, that was the answer I was looking for because certainly it's important. You know, you, you are, you are the day-to-day and you are, the department heads, you know, report to you directly. So I'm glad to hear that you have, you know, experience in that, and that's how you would handle that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hi, thank you for joining us. Kathy actually asked one of the questions I had, so we'll skip over that one. So how much hands-on are you with your budget in Marine City?
So I pretty much did the whole thing with the help of the treasurer. The way that we structure our budget is I send the budget out from BSNA to each of the department heads. They have about a month to work through the budget, update their capital plan, take a look at the fee schedule. And then myself and the department heads usually meet, we go over what their recommended budget is. And then after I get that information from them, get it entered into BSNA, and then I start working with the treasurer on a lot of the finer details. And then if we need to, to, to work on the bottom line, I'll work with the treasurer and whatever department heads we need to, to really help finalize that budget before I can get something that I present to the city.
Excellent. So you are very much hands-on. Excellent. I don't know if you've taken a look at our financials. We are, we, okay, well, that's awesome. We have a PA 33 enacted currently.
We've tried, we tried to get one in Marine City and it failed to pass.
Well, yeah, it failed twice here, too, but we had no choice. We would have had to basically go into receivership if we hadn't done that. But now we're trying to get away from it, but we want to make sure we're not having any shortfalls. And of course, we have a big deficiency in our MERS and OPEB, not unlike many other communities our size. So that is a big struggle for this community as well as this council. So something to keep in consideration. I heard you say BSNA, which is fabulous because that is the system we're on, and it would be super helpful coming into, if you were come to our city, to have that background as well. Because we definitely paid for the software, so it's great when people can use it.
I am, I am in BSNA on a regular, regular status pretty much every day. I'm going in there checking things and, and really following up on what's going on. If I have issues, say, with code or something like that, I'll go in, take a look and see what kind of information's been submitted through the building department or the code enforcement officer to follow up and be able to respond to any complaints that I get.
Yes, okay. And so with, with regards to, I know all small communities, including probably Marine City, we're always looking to get grants and funds other than through tax. I was wondering, like, have you ever written for grants? And if so, what kind of grants have you received for your city?
I have written grants. When I was in Oakland Township, I used to do all of the community development block grant writing. I am fortunate that I have a phenomenal grant writer in Marine City right now. She's actually at about a 98% success rate, which is, I think, phenomenal for any grant writer.
Yeah, for sure.
We have contracted out for other grant writers that have had nowhere near the success rate that she has. Maybe she is someone that I could steal some of that information from and bring with me. I don't know.
Her name's not Linda, is it?
No, no. You know, I, I've really thought that that's something that as a side job, she really should be doing some type of contracted work because she is that, that good at what she does.
Excellent. So obviously, doing what you, what you do and what you've been doing, you have a network to rely on. We are just getting new positions, obviously. I'm sure you've seen that. We have new positions, so everybody's kind of getting their feet wet. So how do you feel that you would fit in with, well, and it's not, it's not a dig on anything, but predominantly male department heads?
You know, a lot of city business, it seems like, is that way. I, I have absolutely no problem with that.
Excellent.
Yeah, I used to work for an engineering firm and it was predominantly male.
Yeah, what I do is predominantly female, the grouping, I'm predominantly female. The CEO is predominantly female, so it's kind of the opposite, so.
I am really able to get along with most anyone, fortunately. It's not finding common bonds. And when, when you find common bonds with people, which I, I have really been kind of full gamut in my life. Like I said, I moved around quite a bit when I was younger, and that's something that you really need to be able to adapt and be able to be outgoing and talk to people to connect.
So and then my other question was, do you live closer to Marine City? Or, because right now, our interim manager, God bless his soul, he is driving forever to get here every day, and I, I don't know how he does it.
I talked to him about that, so I'm about a 20-minute drive from Marine City and I'm about 45 minutes from, from Frazier. In contrast to that, when I lived in West Bloomfield, I had an hour drive to Troy, where I worked, and to Oakland Township where I worked. And then ultimately, when I moved out here to Clay Township, I had an hour drive back to Clay Township. So I'm, I'm used to driving. I absolutely enjoy it because to me, it's downtime. And it's also an opportunity for me to listen to audiobooks, which I love listening to audiobooks all the time. And audiobooks, I, I listen to a wide range, some about, you know, professional development, all the way to comedy, and, and I love thriller books.
Okay, well, thank you very much for answering my questions. I appreciate that.
Yep.
You're muted, Mike.
Yep, they keep muting me without me knowing about it. I'm just trying to do a couple of follow-ups on some of the other questions. Elaine, that, what size budget did you handle at Marine City? What size was you operating under?
So our general fund is $3 million. And when I originally started there, the fund balance in general was $600,000. And in the five and a half years I've been there, it's swelled to about $1.8 million. We are finally doing some projects that have been held off. We bought a street sweeper. We've done quite a bit of road paving. We've got some infrastructure projects, water and sewer that we've done. We are working on finishing up a adaptive remodel for our new city offices. We've got a lot of park improvements that we've made. One of the big things that has been, I think, in our master plan probably for about 20 years, is getting a marina for Marine City. And we're finally to the point now where we've got a purchase order and we're working on making that dream become a reality.
Wow, that's good, really good. So the $14, $15 million that we have doesn't bother you at all?
Nope. Just moving a decimal point. It's a lot of all the same things. You're just dealing with little bigger, bigger numbers. That's it. You know, one of the odd things about government is whether you're a small government or large government, you still have all of the same issues that you have to deal with. Being in a small community where you have to wear so many hats and do so much more, it really is an opportunity where you get to get your hands dirty and learn a lot more about all of the different departments. And it really prepares you much better to move into a larger community.
And one other, just follow-up on Councilwoman Blankey's question, based on how to handle things. I've been involved in the city for most of my life here, 34 years as a firefighter and, I mean, how many years on council and planning commission? And one of the things here is, is council being the weak form of government. But, you know, we have a, you know, very talented city council and very educated and, and smart with a lot of the same goals. But yet, nothing works good since I've been here unless there's a chain of command system, similar to what I've worked with next door in the department. So I just want to reassure that, that is how you feel, too, is city manager here runs the day-to-day, the operations. I mean, that has to eventually be the way, way it works and works well and make sure that, that is okay with you, that it's not gonna be a problem.
No, not at all. That's, that's my understanding of how it runs. One of the things that I did to really kind of help bring our board together was to bring in an outside party and help work on the goals and priorities of board together so that everybody works together and has one vision for the future instead of everybody kind of working on all of their different little pet projects and things. You know, everybody talks about what they want, bring it together in priorities and goals for the board.
Okay, I'll again open it up to other council members at this time. Councilman Michael Lessig.
Thank you. Hello, Elaine. Nice to meet you. Economic development efforts. I know that Marine City is a border community, and I did see that you were, I did know. Economic development efforts. I know that, uh, Marine City is a border community and I did see that you were, I did notice that you were putting in there, looking for a marina, uh, to be built. How do you go about economic development in Marine City at the local level? Do you meet with, uh, do you reach out to the community leaders and community investors? And do you seek out investors? That's a multi-part question, but just generally, what's your approach to economic development?
So one of the things that we really worked on is finding a way to say yes for when someone comes to us with an idea. So if someone comes to us with an idea, with a project, a business or something that they want to bring to the community, what, what can we do to try and make that happen? You know, we don't want to put up blockades or just blindly say, I'm sorry, this doesn't fit our zoning or this isn't an allowed use. It's all about trying to find more opportunities and bring things into the community. So I'm actively involved with our, our chamber. I communicate with them. They really are kind of the eyes and ears for the businesses in the community and, and what's going on, what's working, what isn't. I am on our EDA, our, our county economic development association board. So I'm actively involved with them as well. And it's all about being in contact with people and being willing to listen and open to any type of opportunity and bringing that before the board to really discuss and hopefully make things happen.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, we, are you a ready, uh, redevelopment ready community?
We are working on it. So we are engaged and, uh, that's actually one of my goals for the year is to complete the essential level of redevelopment ready community. Uh, I'm about 40% through the process right now.
Unless you're hired here and then you would, that would become your responsibility.
Exactly.
As you, as you noticed, we're working on the master plan.
Yes.
Uh, that will also require some changes to zoning coordinates, things like that. And you have experience there.
I, I do. We're actually in the process of doing a, um, minor update of our master plan. Uh, when I started there, we had a recreation plan that was outdated. So we were not eligible for any of the DNR funding at the time because we had an outdated rec plan. Uh, I was one of the first ones in the county to actually institute a combined recreation and master plan. There's a lot of the same things that are required with both of those plans as far as public notice and meetings and all of the information. So it seems to make sense to, to pull those two together. So you're not paying for going through the whole process twice.
Agreed, agreed. And, uh, so I assume that you would be able to work on a practical level with our city attorney as we redeveloped or modified these zone, uh, ordinances, et cetera.
Definitely.
Okay, great.
High comfort level with that.
Good. Um, as far as IFTs and di- different forms of tax abatements, have you used any of those in Marine City or Oakland Township?
We have a TIPA and, uh, we have a brownfield or actually a couple of brownfields now in our community. I'm, I'm familiar with all of the different varieties, the commercial facilities, uh, taxes, um, the industrial facilities. There, there are a whole bunch of different ones out there. I know states recently changed a lot of the standards. They've compiled a lot of them into one law. And, uh, we've been dealing with that quite a bit in Marine City, fortunately.
Okay. Uh, last question is how do you approach relations with public? As you mentioned, uh, Marine City is a fairly small community, similar to Frazier and in terms of its hometown feel. So you get a lot of people coming in and wanting to see someone and talk to someone, be it in the building department, uh, maybe at the finance desk or maybe just passing in the hallway. How do you approach, uh, relations with the public? Contractors, uh, people investing in city, just in a, in a general human approach to it.
Anytime that anyone wants to come in and talk to me, I am open and available to talk to them. Uh, there are times when people are at the counter and I actively pass through and I may get pulled into a conversation or it may escalate to the point where they want to speak to the manager. And that's certainly one of the things that I'm there for.
Speak to the manager. That's become, uh, it's become a cliché. But anyway, thank you very much. That's what, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else at this time?
Uh, Elaine, I'm David Runnwick. I'm currently the mayor of Pro Tem. Thank you for taking the time to, uh, apply and the interest in, in the city of Frazier. With that, uh, what kind of research did you do into the city of Frazier to pique your interest into applying for this position?
Well, certainly one of the first things that I do is take a look at your website and see what's been going on. So looked at some of the meeting minutes over the last year. Uh, also SEMCOG is a great source for taking a look at some of the demographics and information about your community. Did a drive-through of the community. I know some people that have businesses and friends that live there, so spoke to them. And, and everyone had wonderful things to say about the city. So that's, um, what I have done and, and I'm, I'm very pleased with what I see, the community. I, I love how really it's, it's orchestrated and laid out. It's obviously something that I think a, a good planner has been very involved with. And the communities or the, the neighborhoods and everything seem to be nice and clean and well-kept.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, in, in Marine City, have you had experience with a downtown development authority? And the reason I ask is that, um, not, not Mr. Thompson, our interim, but there was an interest in trying to revive our downtown development authority uh, with our, with our previous city manager and it kind of fell by the wayside. What, what, what kind of ideas or plans would you bring forth to help, uh, spark that and start that back up?
So the, the TIPA that we have in our community actually originally started as a DDA. So the downtown zone is TIPA's zone one was, was the DDA. Our TIPA really operated, I think, a lot more like a DDA. Uh, I think that's one of the reasons why the state kind of clamped down on the rules because they had a pot of money and used that money for things like beautification and, uh, some business improvements, things like that. I know TIPA, when it was really kind of originally established, it was more so something that you would be working on greater scale projects, bonding out and use the tax increment fund to be able to pay those bonds back. So I, I think working with the DDA or starting a DDA, it's just a matter of working within the confines of the law and getting that established if that's something that the board was interested in moving forward with.
Okay. And I, unfortunately I only have one more question because all the others, the, the hazard of being last. All the other council members have, you know, asked a lot of my questions and plus they were covered in your resume and so on. My last question is, so you've had the opportunity to meet with the various departments, uh, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, various departments in the city. And what's your overall impression of them?
I think they seem like people that are very dedicated to the community. I know you've got a lot of people that are, have been there long-term and obviously some, some new people, which I think is a good mix because bringing in some, some new people, you get fresh eyes on things. And sometimes that helps you to find areas for improvement a lot easier. But then it's also very helpful having those people with longevity because you have all of that history that they're able to help share and, and bring into situations where you're trying to piece together a puzzle from say 20 years ago.
Okay.
I like them. I like them all.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and I lied. I have one more question.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I do. So I know you're working on the master plan and I was just wondering where you are in that process. Um, I don't know if you have started your 63 day comment period or if you're working on finalizing it now. That wasn't really clear.
This, can Mr. DeLal answer that?
Yeah, we can answer that if you'd like.
We defer to our lawyer. We know when to delegate.
And he's still smiling about it. So that's good.
Yeah, just delegate away. Uh, the, the master plan was reviewed Wednesday night by our planning commission. And it was approved and it is going to be coming to city council for its own adoption. Um, not because it's required by law, but because all involved felt that it is, at the end of the day, your master plan too. And so it'll be coming to city council, uh, for adoption.
Oh, final stop. You're there.
Final stop.
That's great. Um, I guess also one of the questions that I have is what, what do you see as one of the, the things that the city manager is going to have to focus on, say like the first 90 days? And not legal, because I know that there are some issues and obviously can't talk about that.
Uh, I would say making sure we have the right people in the right seat that are going to support you. Uh, make sure we have adequate staffing to the needs that are, uh, done by the city, um, in moving forward. And, um, getting out of this COVID and back into some more normalcy with our, a couple of our departments, um, which is, is, needs to be done. And be proactive. Um, be, be very proactive and try to get a little bit more involvement in our business, which is the current city manager I've been doing for the last few months. But I would like to continue that even with the new city managers, get more involved with the businesses and meeting with them. Doing their, you know, grand openings or their expansions and stuff like that. And, uh, because they are a big taxpayer in this city.
Do you have a chamber that does ribbon cuttings or anything like that?
Yes, we do. Um, but a lot of them don't know about it. So when we do get the IFTs or we get information, it's just sometimes make sure we have a follow-up with them. Um, and that's what we're doing now, but, um, the city manager I've currently been working on is actually trying to put some ideas together for the businesses of the year coming up and, and presenting them, the ones that are growing in our city and doing expansions in our city. And, um, so we're working on that project too.
Right.
Yep. We, we don't have our own chamber. We're, uh, partners with another community.
Yeah. And if I could just, sorry Elaine, I was just going to say that to me, I think probably one of the key things, the new city manager will be blessed with a few new department heads. Hopefully all the roles will be filled by the time we fill this one. And so for me, the first 90 days is just making sure the new vision for the city is proceeding as we had hoped and had planned. We have done some different structures than we've had for the city in the past with the assistance of Amy Sell. And obviously when you redesign something, you have to sometimes step back and tweak it and, and reanalyze and modify. And that's going to be probably a, a chunk of the first 90 days is making sure that those that are in those roles have what they need and resources. And then just really making sure that there's transparency throughout, that information is conveyed to everyone on all sides. That's, we, we struggle. We try to be very transparent this board with what we're doing, why we're doing it and when we're doing it. And I still, even to this day, feel like sometimes I don't know things. So that would be something I would love is just to make sure that I'm not finding out about something after it's already blown up, that I'm aware as it goes along. And, and unfortunately, um, right now it's not, and that's not a dig on anyone by any means. It's just a, a ideal world. There's a lot of unfortunate circumstances that we've dealt with and some, oh, some vacancies that we weren't anticipating when we were anticipating other ones. So it's created the perfect storm. Uh, Mr. Thompson has done a great job trying to navigate the insanity called filling the holes and, and holding it all together. And hopefully I think, I think we're there. And so that's what I see for the first 90 days.
And we, we're at time, unfortunately. I, I warned everybody I was going to have to be, be mean, but I do want to try to keep us on, on the schedule. So, um, if it's all right, um, Elaine, thank you so much. It was great for everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
To you and, um, have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you, everyone. It was nice talking to you all and hope to, uh, work together soon.
Okay. Have a good night and stay safe.
Thank you.
You too. All right. We have a few minutes to, for a short break.
All right.
Hi, Deborah. Thanks for joining us. We're taking a short break and we will be getting started at 4:45.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys get Comcast working? No? They're the worst. That's why I don't have them in my career. All right. We're going to get started in one minute. All right. 4:45 on the dot. I'm being very strict on time tonight. We're on a tight schedule. So Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to introduce you to Deborah Peck Lichtenberg. And I look forward to you all getting to know each other better over the next 40 minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Amy. Good evening, Deborah. How are you tonight?
I'm doing very well. Thank you.
It's okay to call you Deborah?
It is. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I will, uh, ask some questions ahead of time this time because I waited last time too late and I missed a couple of them letting people go. But why don't you introduce yourself formally and tell us a little bit about yourself, um, some of your hobbies you'd like to do or just, uh, advise council and a little bit, uh, what you'd like us to know about you.
Great. Thank you. Um, I know you all have seen my credentials. You know that I, um, a CPA by training. Um, I'm currently the director of finance and operations for the city of Gross Point Farms. Um, my whole career really has, uh, revolved around service to, uh, local governments and, um, primarily city governments. But beyond the finance aspect of things, um, I really have found that I have a passion for strategic planning, really visioning for a community and, uh, looking for ways to help it grow and become more. Um, I'm a big believer in best practices and, um, continuous improvement. So that's something that I always strive for and I always encourage in my staff as well. I'm a lifelong learner. As a CPA, I, um, am required to have 40 hours, um, a year of continuing. Um, I'm a lifelong learner. As a CPA, I, um, am required to have 40 hours, um, a year of continuing professional education. And I always try to focus that on areas that, um, I may be interested in or that may be relevant, uh, to some of the topics that are, um, currently going on in the organization that I'm a part of. Um, on a personal note, I enjoy hiking and gardening. And, uh, during COVID, uh, we decided because we were working remotely to put out bird feeders. And I'm now an official, uh, bird watcher. So, uh, those are some of the things that I enjoy doing, uh, when I'm not working. And, um, this year I've been able to combine some of those things, um, with work.
Good. Well, thank you. Um, with, uh, the time you've had of looking into Frazier, why would you pick Frazier or what, what attracted you to the city of Frazier? Why would you want to come here and work?
Well, Frazier is obviously a city that's been, um, going through some transitions. And, um, there are so many positive things and positive steps that you've already taken. And I really look at this as an opportunity to help, um, guide the community forward, uh, bring a team together, uh, really lay that groundwork for, um, the collaboration and rebuilding of, um, some of the trust that, uh, needs to exist for an organization to work well together. Um, I've noticed in looking at some of your meetings and, and going through minutes, um, and some of the other research that, um, transparency is a significant, uh, focus of council. I'm a big believer in, in transparency and, um, in some of my former roles, I've actually served as the FOIA coordinator. Um, and I've learned along the way that the best way to, uh, let people know that you're making good decisions for the right reasons is to provide the information that they need. Um, and that is something that I have a lot of experience with. And I think that I could really, um, help the city to grow and, and continue to move forward and build a lot of that trust that only comes from, uh, having that information out there and, uh, sharing it with the community, with council, with the staff, and, uh, bringing it all together.
Okay. Well, at this time, before I ask the rest of mine, I'll go ahead and open it up to other council members, uh, for their questions. All right. Councilwoman Amy Varansky.
Mr. Blaschek can go first. That's totally fine. Mix it up.
Okay. Deborah.
How are you?
Good. Can you hear me? Okay.
I can, yes.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Uh, I have a couple of questions. We, uh, you're a CPA by training and, uh, so I assume you've taken a look at our books. You know, we have a fairly large OPEB and pension liabilities. We also have a fairly large fund balance right now. Um, do you have any ideas, uh, as how you would approach that? And, uh, as you know, we have also implemented PA 33. Uh, so how would you approach that since we do have kind of a lot of cash? We have a lot of long-term liabilities. Uh, what would your reasoned approach be to managing that and bringing down that fund balance to something a bit more in line with, uh, best practices as you call it?
Right. Um, one of the keys, and, um, I didn't see any, uh, information on this on your website, but, um, really formulating a long-term financial forecast is, is a key component. Um, currently, when I put together a budget, uh, for Gross Point Farms, one of the things that is included in there is a five-year, um, capital improvement plan, which includes not only infrastructure projects, but, um, larger items that we have. And we know when we need to replace police cars, we save for fire trucks. You really have to understand what that cash flow piece of it is. But you really also have to focus on the revenue side. You, you, a, a lot of people focus on the expenditure side first. I prefer to look at the, the resources that you have coming in. Um, so that's key, obviously, understanding what your tax base is and, and other sources. But in terms of the fund balance itself, most communities in Michigan would target between a 20 and 25% fund balance. Um, I've seen some communities go up as high as 30%, but once you get over that, uh, like you said, you, you really are sitting on a lot and it's hard to, um, ask for anything more.
Right.
When you're looking at those long-term liabilities, you really have to balance. Uh, you don't want to put all of that money, uh, towards those liabilities and then leave yourself short. That's where the long-term planning comes in. You really have to look at what are the key components that the community wants? That what services do we need to continue to provide and fit all of those pieces together? Um, one of the things that you can do in a short-term basis is assign some of that fund balance. So, um, by assigning it, you're not actually moving it anywhere yet, but you're, uh, stating an intention to use it for a purpose. Um, you can assign it for future capital projects. You can assign it for additional contributions to OPEB. You can assign it for additional pension contributions. And, um, we actually have done that the last two years in the farms. Uh, we have ended up with more at the end of the year than we anticipated. Um, and rather than leaving it all in unassigned where it looks like we just have, um, you know, money to roll around in, um, we, we speak out loud what the purposes are that we're going to use it for. Assign it and then the next year we'll move it forward.
Okay. Yeah. And I don't want to take up too much time with this, but I, it actually dovetailed into my second question, which was, can you name a couple of elements of a strategic plan that you would focus on? I think you did that. Last thing, uh, last quick question, because there are others, uh, after me. Economic development efforts. Have you, Gross Point Farms has some businesses.
Gross Point Farms is rather limited in their commercial activities.
Yeah.
Um, Westland had, where I was prior to the farms, um, had more, uh, economic development efforts. Um, when I was in the city of Novi, which has a lot of economic development going on, my activity there was limited to dealing with, um, the development in TIPA districts. Uh, there was a downtown development authority and there were a few properties that had industrial facility tax credits. Um, so I dealt with it on that side.
All right. Uh, we have all those interests right now. So thank you. I appreciate it. I'll, I'll defer to someone else.
Great. Councilwoman Kathy Blankey.
Thank you, Mayor.
There you go.
Okay. Deborah?
Hello. How are you?
Hi, I apologize.
No worries.
Okay. But I see it all the time on TV, so we're good, right? Um, but, thank you for applying to, uh, for city manager in Frazier. Um, my line of questioning, uh, since I'm not a finance person and it's quite clear that your background, your training, your education, uh, focuses on that. Um, I, I, I just have a couple of other questions that aren't going to revolve around finances. You mentioned earlier on in, um, you know, your discussion that, uh, when you were working with people, your staff, how many people at one time, uh, were, would you be responsible for? That's to say, what's the largest staff you ever, uh, administered to?
So in terms of direct reports, I currently have six direct reports underneath me.
Okay.
Um, and at the city of Novi, my staff was slightly larger. I had nine direct reports there. Um, it's a little bit unique structure that we have in Gross Point Farms. So I head up obviously the finance and treasury departments and oversee, um, assessing. And I am sort of the default, um, IT director as well, um, just because I like that.
Right.
And, um, and so in, in terms of people that I directly oversee and supervise their daily activities, that would be my staff of six. Beyond that, in my role as Director of Operations, I deal directly with, um, the other department heads in terms of, uh, more broad strategic planning for their departments. So I don't necessarily direct their daily activities, but we do coordinate, um, if there are infrastructure projects that are going on, if we're looking at, um, how we're going to safely open the swimming pool this year, um, what's a better way to schedule the tennis courts? Um, those types of things I get involved in with the department heads. So while they, um, directly report to the city manager, um, they work with me on operational issues.
Wonderful. That's what I wanted to draw from you. Uh, you know, we have a finance director at this point and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, your, your career and your credentials have encompassed people skills and working with people. Because I find that to be very important and I'm sure many people do. Um, and, and you just answered what I wanted to hear in as much as branching out to the other departments, other interests, uh, being user-friendly to the other employees. And, uh, that's all I have. So thank you, Deborah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Hi Deborah. Um, my name's Amy. Uh, my question for you is, I, I think it's obvious, but in case it's not, because lots of people are watching this or will watch it later. What makes you, you, you're obviously very well qualified for the finance and the position. And you didn't apply for that here. We had an opening. We just filled it a month and a half ago.
Right.
Um, I'm sure Vince is happy you didn't apply. What makes you want to transition away from day in and day out finance and, and, and go more administrative? What makes you want to take that sort of, I don't, I don't know how you view it, but change in trajectory of your career?
Right. Um, I really see it as just the next logical step in my career. Everything that we do, uh, day in and day out has a dollar component to it. Um, and i- it's not that I want to get away from that, but what I want to do is to use that skillset that's just part of who I am to look at the broader planning and long-term, um, goal-setting for a community. I, I really feel that my past experience, um, has been leading to this next step. And I have focused my energies on, um, gaining those skills everywhere that I can. Um, and I really, uh, one of my, um, skills, I, I believe, is looking at the full range of, um, issues and being able to put them together. Um, I, I'm a big, uh, proponent of bringing down those silos. And to the extent that we can, uh, work in cross-departmental teams and really understand what's going on, helps us work smarter, not harder, and really, uh, uses a community's resources as efficiently as possible. And we all know that that is one of the biggest struggles right now. Um, you know, people are stretched thin, uh, money is tight and our citizens still expect quality services and, um, a community that they can be proud of. And that is what we're working towards.
Excellent. What do you see, um, in terms of if you were to get this job, the short, sort of 90-day or either short or long-term objectives that you could identify Frazier has now? And, and let's stay away from the finance, but more global as the city manager. Cause I'm sure there's, we've already identified some from the finance, obviously, but highlighting some other areas that you see opportunities for as a city manager to tackle?
Right. I, what I have seen in doing my research is, um, this council has taken a very active role in, um, filling the gaps and looking for, um, solutions to a lot of challenging issues. Um, one of the first things that I would want to do would be to meet with council and really, um, have some conversations about, um, what the, the, the goals are. What are the, the values of, um, council? Because in the end, what the city manager is hopefully going to do for you is translate what your goals and directives are into action plans. Um, so first I need to understand what, uh, what the priorities are of council. Um, then I need to understand where each of the departments is at, what resources they need, uh, to keep things moving forward. I know we have new directors on staff, um, who are very excited to be there. And, um, we have some ongoing transitions, um, addressing those things, understanding what concerns there are within the organization and addressing some of those issues and, um, and really working towards building that cohesive team. Um, that is my, my short-term, um, somewhat nebulous goal. Um, but it's a very, very important part of it. Because if we can't start from the, um, from the beginning, um, in developing that teamwork, um, then we're working against each other instead of working together. And, uh, working together is always the goal.
Excellent. And my last question is, what are some of the weaknesses that you envision having taking on this sort of global leadership role? And how do you anticipate, uh, overcoming them if you were to be appointed the city manager for Frazier?
So in terms of weaknesses, obviously, um, as you know, I have not served as a city manager before. So I, um, don't consider that a weakness, more of a challenge. And, um, I believe in networking, reaching out to other resources. Um, I do have a lot of, um, connections within the municipal community with other, uh, city managers, finance directors, people who have made the transition. And I will, uh, continue to seek out their assistance and their, their counsel, um, as I move forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your answers and your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi Deborah, I have a couple other follow-up ones. Um, what size budget were you dealing with the gross points over there?
Um, our new budget is $17 million.
17?
Yes.
So similar to Frazier, a little bit more. Um, and if you're able to move forward with, uh, city of Frazier, what's your avail- availability?
Um, I would need to give a month's notice, um, to the farms.
Three day. And what do you see as an ideal transition plan? Since this would be your first, um, opportunity as a city manager, what type of transition plan would you like to see?
Um, I would like to have some time with, uh, Mark Thompson to talk about some of his experiences there. Um, I don't expect it to be a, uh, a lengthy need for transition. Um, I consider it more of a relationship building and, um, identifying the resources that already exist in the organization. and, um, identifying the resources that already exist in the organization. Uh, while there are new faces there, I know that there are also, uh, long-term staff members who, who have more of the history, um, that can assist with some of that. Otherwise, it's a matter of immersing myself in the community. Really learning where the landmarks are, um, and, um, getting out there and really understanding the, um, the culture and, and the pulse of the community.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll turn over to other council, Councilwoman Patricia Rennick.
Hi, Deborah. Thank you for joining us. Um, I just have a few questions. Um, when it comes to grant writing, do you have any experience with that? And have you been successful with your community? Because as you know, all communities are always looking for dollars we don't have to tax.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I do have, um, some degree of experience with grant writing. Uh, we do receive some CBPG dollars, although it is rather limited. I have worked on the state, the new, um, MIDC, the Indigent Defense, uh, Council, uh, Grant Writing with our Court Administrator. And obviously, most recently, I worked on the CARES Act, um, Grant Funding for, um, dollars that came through last summer. So, uh, that was a nice, uh, addition to the coffers to have that money come in. In the past, I've worked with city engineers on, uh, SAW grant funds and looked for some other, uh, private public partnerships with DTE and, um, converting street lighting to LED and some of those other opportunities that exist out there. So, um, a lot of it is, is looking for it. And once you, uh, find the opportunities, you know, really just getting on it and, and, um, get those applications submitted. Cause i- if you don't, if you don't ask for the money, the answer is always no, right?
And it goes fast, because everybody's got their hand out. Yeah, for sure.
Exactly.
Um, my next question is, um, how much experience do you have with contract negotiations? Cause obviously, you know, we have several, um, different unions here.
Right.
So, you know, just what is your experience?
I have, um, worked on the collective bargaining negotiations, um, both in Westland and in Gross Point Farms. I've worked with Teamsters Unions, uh, TPOA, um, and POAM and the, um, Officers, uh, Police Officers Union. It's, to me, the big part of contract negotiations is, um, not coming in guns a-blazing as adversaries, but really understanding, um, what each side, um, values and what they're coming after, what they, um, they feel will make their work environment, uh, a more productive and, and positive place. And, uh, being able to work with that in the confines of our budget.
Excellent. And, um, since I know, obviously, you're in finance there in the woods there are, um, do you have, do you guys use BSNA software as well? Or, okay, cause that's what we've been here and we have lots of different modules we paid for. And we finally started last couple of years really getting to the nuts and bolts of it. And I think since that's set up for all municipalities, it's probably a really good thing to have some background in.
Yeah. One of the, uh, things during the COVID crisis is, uh, we still do not have our city hall, um, fully open to visitors. Uh, we really targeted a virtual city hall setup and, uh, immediately set up remote work, um, environments for all of our clerical staff. We implemented, uh, significant changes. We implemented the time sheeting module, uh, integrated that with the payroll module. We added online invoice approval, uh, put purchase orders online, a, a number of different things. So we were able to switch to that virtual environment, um, without a single interruption in service. And I believe that you just brought on IT right as your IT contractors. Love them. Kudos to you. Good choice.
Okay, good. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I believe that you're working with Tom Conway, um, and, and Ken Young there, uh, who I know and work with at the farm. So, uh, they're a terrific partner along with BSNA.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other council members at this time?
Uh, I believe I'm, I believe I'm last. That's good. Uh, Amy, how much time do I have?
You have thirteen minutes.
There may be some follow-up questions, Dave, so go ahead.
Okay. Um, Deborah, how much research have you done on the City of Frazier?
I have done, uh, I think a fair amount. I have watched several of your, uh, meeting videos. I've reviewed council minutes. I've looked at your financial statements and your budget documents and, uh, looked at a number of other resources that are available out on the website and, um, just in a, a Google search.
Okay. Um, how, how much experience do you have again with, does Gross Point Farms do a lot with a downtown development authority or?
No, Gross Point Farms does not. Um, however, the City of Westland and the City of Novi, where I was prior to that, um, they had, uh, TIPA districts and, um, and some of the other tax incentives. But, uh, Gross Point Farms has a downtown area, but does not have a downtown authority.
Okay. In, in those other communities, did you have a lot of interaction with the businesses?
I sat on the, um, the DDA and the TIPA boards in Westland. So I got to know the members of the boards themselves. Um, but I did not, uh, really interact with them much outside of that.
Okay. Um, and, um, so you've had an opportunity today to visit with all the different department heads. What's your overall impression so far?
Overall, it was, uh, very refreshing to see that there is good energy. Uh, the, like I said, the newer folks, uh, spoke very highly of the transition, uh, to the city. Some of the long-term staff members, uh, spoke of, of why they, uh, have been long-term, uh, staff members. And that despite, uh, some of the transitions that have taken place, it remains a place that they enjoy working and, um, are very positive about the city. And it's good to see that kind of positive energy, uh, right from the start.
Okay. Thank you. And, and thank you for taking the time and interest, uh, with, you know, in the City of Frazier.
Thank you.
Uh, Deborah, in our city here, obviously, we're a weaker form of government. Um, how would you handle or how do you handle when you have a very strong-willed council? And this council seems to be all on the same page, but I've been on councils that are kind of all over the place. And, um, dealing with the day-to-day operations and then dealing with a, a board of seven members also, and then all the department heads. How do you balance that out?
Right. I, um, I, I'm thankful that, uh, the council and the farms is, um, i- is much like this council that, uh, works well together and may have different points of view from time to time, but they generally find their way to, uh, a common understanding. Um, although I have worked with councils that were very divided and very, um, adversarial. And I think it is very important to, um, as I said at the beginning, to have an understanding with the council of what their role is and what the role of the city manager is and how, um, requests for information and workflow goes through the city manager and, um, from there is dispersed through to the staff. When you have council members that, um, that have very strong agendas that they are looking to approach, um, to the extent that the city has pre-established, um, a mission statement and has community, um, goals that are already in place, it's a little bit easier to redirect energies back towards accomplishing those goals. So I always, um, believe that that is a good starting point. Um, at any point when there's a significant transition, whether it's after an election, um, or resignation, if there's, if there's a turnover of any kind or a significant, um, you know, a circumstance that, that happens in the community. But i- if you work upfront, I, I always like to say, I have a lot of sayings that I use, but one of my favorites is if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And by taking that time upfront to establish what the city is about, what we're, the direction that we want to head, it takes a lot of the emotion out of, uh, some of those conflicts that come up because we can then bring the discussion back to those, um, those values, those, those pillars that we've already established as a group. And we can help redirect and then, um, find a way to walk it down the road together.
Great. Well, I think you answered that very well. Do you have any comments or questions for council at this time? Individually or as a whole, or if we can help you with?
So, um, you asked me what my plan would be for transitioning. What would council be looking at? How would you be evaluating, um, success in your next city manager? A year from now, what, what would success look like to you?
Well, that's a pretty complex question.
It's a good question.
It's a very good question, because it's seven individuals who are kind of, you know, focused on the same thing, but there's different ways of getting there, right? Um, personally.
Do we defer to Donna on this?
No, this is.
No, no comment from the attorney.
Um, I, I'm sure everyone can give you a different one, but some of the broad ones I've seen in with this council is, you know, reopen, get back to normal, safety as po- as safe as possible. Making sure that our, uh, new partners and department heads are, are focused on the same agenda that we all are on and trying to make the success of the city, um, make very good decisions, be very proactive in, in what we can do to keep the city moving forward. And, um, you know, grow the city infrastructural-wise as best we can and improve on it. And, you know, that's kind of the basic ones. But there's always those little things that, you know, communication by car needs to always be improved, no matter who's there. Open communication is great. I personally hate any surprises, um, that I get from phone calls or newspapers that, that drive me crazy. Um, but making sure that we all have the same information going forward. Everyone's up to date a- as needed and, um, and if anyone can add to that, that would be great. Councilor Lessig.
Yes, I can. I guess I can put it this, put it simply. Uh, I would like to see a year from now that we have a sustainable five-year plan, that the city manager has a, has a good grasp on the current finances, the current and, uh, near-term capital improvement needs, that we are appropriately budgeting and charging for water and sewer utilities. Essentially, uh, putting in place a framework for going forward that we can all agree is solid, provides for the needs of the city and provides the services people are willing to be taxed for. That, that would be it.
Right.
Yeah, I would just, I would just add, you know, we've got a lot of new people. And the, the benefit of this, uh, new city manager's role is that they get to help us transition. We have tried to navigate away from business as usual, which has gotten us into a significant hole. Cuts were not made for years, um, resources were not spent in appropriate manner. Um, and this council and i- has, has worked really hard to, to fix that, trying to get the right people, as, you know, I'm stealing the mayor's, uh, tagline of the right people in the right place. And I think we're almost there. And to me, success would be not just, um, not just giving us lip service, but making sure that we're aware of what needs to be done and making sure that our vision that we started can come to fruition so that we can reduce or, or decrease or eliminate the need for PA 33, if it's even available. We can provide the services that our residents have, have grown to love, um, and depend on. And that we can all maintain, um, property values and a sense of community that Frazier's known for.
Eva, two minutes.
And just, um, out of curiosity to that end, do you, um, uh, which way are you expecting the census to, to land with your numbers?
Fingers crossed here, right? We are on the, we're like four hundred people away. So I don't, I haven't seen any information that, any secret information. So I think we're all waiting with bated breath.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay for now, but, uh, with some of the expansions going on and possibly in the future, I think, you know, there's a good chance we'll be over that pretty soon, so.
Well, and, and the goal is to be able to give the community the information that they need to approve a millage increase and sustain services that they need to, when that is necessary, um, so that it doesn't land squarely on the shoulders of council to make those decisions. So, um, I, I agree that more information is, is what we do in public service.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a pretty, some pretty good expenses coming pretty soon. So we're gonna have to plan for those, obviously.
Yes.
All right. It sounds like we're at a perfect stopping point. So.
Thank you, Deborah, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to meet you all. All right.
You have a good night and stay safe, please.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.
All right. We've got another five-minute break and we'll reconvene at 5:30. Thank you.
Amy?
Yes.
I do have a question. That question I did want to ask that first candidate about, um, which may be a standard question you would find out is, is how much time would they need to inform availability? And what type of transition plan are they looking for? Because that's gonna be important in conversations with Mr. Thompson and us going forward too, so.
Yeah, excellent point.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was having a little trouble with the link, but so I clicked on it. It's like invalid meeting. I'm like, oh no.
You figured it out. Again, kudos for the background there. That's, that's quite impressive.
Thank you.
Two thumbs up for IT.
Yeah. All right, we're right at 5:30 and I am being kind of strict on time, so we have another, we have 40 minutes. Mayor and council, I'm thrilled to introduce you to Darwin McClary and look forward to you being able to get to know him over the next 40 minutes.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Darwin. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you doing, Your Honor?
Good. We only got to meet each other walking in and walking out, so I, I look forward to talking to you. Why don't you start off by just formally introducing yourself to council? Tell us a little bit about yourself, maybe your hobbies or what you'd like to do. And anything that you'd like them to know about you. So why don't you go ahead and take the floor for now?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Your Honor, members of council, thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I'm excited. Frazier is, is a wonderful community. I'm, I'm quite familiar with the community from my time managing two other communities in Macomb County. I, I am Darwin McClary. I was born and raised in Oakland County, born in what is now Rochester Hills. It was Avon Township when I was born. I grew up in Rochester and Oxford. Actually, a little east of Oxford in Leonard, not far from Romeo. And I, I went on to college at Siena High School in Adrian, obtained my Bachelor of Arts degree in Human Services with a concentration in Public Administration and went on and worked on my Master's degree at Oakland University and then finished up at Golden Gate University, where I received my Master of Public Administration degree. I have 30 years of, more than 30 years of experience as a city and village manager here in Michigan. More than 20 years of that experience managing communities right here in the Detroit metro area in Wayne, Oakland and Macomb Counties. And more than 10 years in Macomb County. I, I, as far as hobbies are concerned, I enjoy mostly warm weather activities. Hiking, camping, swimming, fishing, canoeing and kayaking now that we live on a lake here in, in Waterford. And I also, one of my passions also is genealogy. I've been working on my family tree for almost 30 years now and, and have more than 13,000 people plugged into it. So, so I love family history. I, I am currently serving as interim village administrator for the Village of Blissfield. I have been serving in that position since January. And I just found out this week that I am a finalist for that position as well. So that's a little bit about myself. I, I am a member of ICMA. I, I am a credential manager through the International City and County Management Association. I am also a member of the State Association, the Michigan Municipal Executives, and serve on a couple committees there. And I am also a member of the Michigan Public Employer Labor Relations Association. I am a commissioned notary public. My commission expires in July of next year. And hopefully that gives you a little bit of background on me, Your Honor.
Absolutely. Why, why would you want to come to Frazier? Why Frazier? Any research or any drive-bys or anything you've done? What, what, what do you like about Frazier that you'd want to come here and work as a city manager?
I, I think I've managed small communities and I've managed communities that are larger than Frazier. I think Frazier is just the right size for me in terms of what I'm looking for professionally. It's small enough. It's got that small-town feeling to it. It's a, it's a smaller, compact, close-knit community. I work well in those types of communities. I'm familiar with the city of Frazier and with Macomb County from my more than 10 years of experience in the county. I, I've also worked with a number of people that are now working with the city of Frazier, McKennan Associates and Sarah Traxler, Jim Wright, who is your building official. I've worked, I've worked with IT Wright and BSNA and you guys are members of Mitten, the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network for your purchasing and bidding processes. I know Jennifer San Giorgi at Mitten very well. I, you contract with Serasa for your dispatching services. And I was actually one of the three managers that helped set up Serasa back in, we worked on that in 2009 and 2010. I worked with then-city manager from Roseville, Steve Truman, and city manager from St. Clair Shores, Ken Podolsky, to set that up. So there are so many things that, that I am already familiar with in, in Frazier. And I feel that I am well-prepared to be able to jump right into the position and, and get started. But one of the things that impresses me the most about Frazier, as you drive through the community, you look at the parks, you, you drive through the neighborhoods, you feel the pride in Frazier, the pride on the part of citizens in how well they maintain their homes and their yards, pride by city staff in the work that they do to maintain the community, the streets and the sidewalks. There, you feel that when you drive through the community. And, and that is something that impresses me a great deal.
Great. Okay, well, I will go ahead and turn it over to other council members. I do have some other questions, but I will share the floor at this time with any.
Dave should go first.
Councilwoman Blanky.
Hi Darren, how are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. It's obvious to me, a- as you just aforementioned, that you have the experience certainly and that you're sort of inter-county connected here with other communities that we are also familiar with. I know that, you know, as you mentioned, you've been the interim village administrator since January. And my question would be to you, as, as that administrator and as the lead there in the Village of Blissfield, how did you handle COVID? Did you, what did you find to be your biggest challenges with that?
Oh my gosh, we are still handling COVID. And, and I hope, I hope we get to a better place soon, which I think we are with the vaccination rates increasing as they are. Handling COVID really was a cut, is a constant research effort. Constantly keeping up on, well, formally, the governor's executive orders and then when that went through the courts and, and it was transferred over to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and MIOSHA, because we really are operating under two rules. It, we had to stay on top of things. I attended our county emergency management meetings. We had, we started out with three meetings a week through Zoom to stay on top of things. Then we went down to two meetings a week and then one meeting. But, but staying connected with the county emergency management, the county health department, constantly reviewing the governor's executive orders and then MDHHS and MIOSHA orders. It's very complicated. We, the orders that we get from the Department of Health and Human Services are really geared toward protecting the public. But MIOSHA rules are to protect employees and we have to mesh those together. Right now in Blissfield, I can tell you that, you know, I, I have been getting some pressure to reopen. I shouldn't say reopen Village Hall. We are open to the public with, with certain guidelines. But go back to in-person public meetings. At this point, with the, with the rates increasing, the variance that we have been seeing, I had a lot of concern for my employees. I had a lot of concerns for citizens. And so after talking to the council, reviewing the orders, determining that after March 31st, the only way that we could continue remote meetings, purely remote meetings was if we utilized the county's or a local emergency declaration. We did have one in place in Lenawey County. We utilized that. It expired April 30th. And the county asked me to send them a letter of support for, for extending their order for an additional few months. And I did so. They did end up extending it until Ju- July 31st. So we are operating under the county's emergency declaration to legally be able to continue Zoom meetings. And hopefully by, hopefully by the end of July, we will be at a point in our vaccination process that it will be safe. We will have reached that 70% vaccination rate to be able to safely open for public meetings. But the other problem that I identified was the fact that in the state orders, it gave municipalities no legal authority to determine who could participate in in-person meetings and who could be turned away from those public meetings. And that was one of the reasons why it was so important to me to continue purely remote meetings, because there was no legal authority for us to determine who could attend and who could not. And that could have opened us to, to liability under Open Meetings Act violations. I hope that answered your question.
It sure does. In, in, it does. And it was very specific and clear. I just threw that out there. With, with your immense experience of 30 years, I thought I would just ask that question because of course, we're very conscious of it. Our city manager now, Mr. Thompson, and our mayor and the public safety and everyone here, all the employees have been very, you know, involved in keeping the community safe. So I thank you for your answer. I wanted clarification on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council. Councilwoman Amy Baranski.
Hello, I just have a couple of questions for you. We have a lot of information from you and I thank you for taking the time to do the video interview, the question interview and the written interview. So I'll try not to repeat or, or double over. What would you say, or could you give me some specific examples of your management style in terms of actual city management or city manager experiences? You know, day in and day out, examples of things you've had to do and how you've handled them as the city manager and the various jobs you've had?
Okay, so my, as far as my management style is concerned, I, I consider myself to be a collaborative, facilitative manager. I don't micromanage my department heads. They are our experts. They know more than any of us sitting in this meeting as to the operations of their departments, their, their realm of services. What I do as manager is I try to be a coach, a mentor, a facilitator in, in helping to make sure that my staff has the proper tools and all of the resources to be able to do their jobs effectively. That's my job, is to pull everything together, make sure we are all working as one team. To one of us get caught up in our own, our own silos sometimes. It's important that we stay connected to each other. We understand how our jobs relate to each other and how our work impacts the work of others within the organization. And so I, I know this is kind of general because, you know, there's so much that goes into it. But it's important to me that we have regular staff meetings to keep everybody connected. I had instances, I have instances on a daily basis with my staff in Blissfield where they come to me for advice. We've got some new staff members, some new department heads. Our treasurer is new, our clerk is new. And so they come to me for advice, for counseling, for coaching. And they rely on me for my expertise, my knowledge of state municipal law. I'm not an attorney, but I do, I do know the laws pretty well. And, and that's the role that I most enjoy having is, is being a resource for them. My, my treasurer just yesterday was, was asking me about a DDA issue and the village had been capturing, DDA, had been capturing the intermediate school district taxes well after the debt, the DDA debt had come off. And so we've been working with the Michigan Department of Treasury to arrange for the repayment of those captured funds to the intermediate school district. Our treasurer is new and so he was asking for. Our treasurer is new. And so he was asking for my advice on that. How should he handle it? How should he handle it from the standpoint of accounting? So I gave him some of my advice. And so just being, being a support and being a, a resource and a mentor and a coach is the best thing that I can do as manager. And serving as a liaison between staff and council. My role also is to advise the city council on important matters that need your attention, that you have to make policy decisions on. And so I, I work with my staff to gather that information and be able to share it to council so that you have, you have as much information as, as you need to be able to make sound decisions.
Excellent. Could you speak maybe a little bit when you have to do something that the employees don't like, but that is in the best interest of the city? Either because of funding or state or local directives or councils directives? How do you handle that from an administrative standpoint?
Well, first of all, it's important to understand why my staff members have the concerns that they have. Trying to see things from their perspective before, before a decision is made. Their voices are very important. We are all part of one team working together to provide the highest quality services to our citizens as cost-effectively as, as we can. And I know I talked about this earlier and so I sound like I'm a broken record with some of the people who had sat with me earlier. But, but we are, we're one team, council and administration. We need to listen to staff and understand and get a clear understanding of what their concerns are, why, why they may be opposed to what is being proposed. We need to take that information in. We need to weigh it against the other information we have, the reasons why we need to do what we need to do. And hopefully by gaining perspectives from all sides, we can make much better decisions. And, but ultimately, I always tell my staff and, and I always coach them on the fact that, of what our roles are. The city council's role is to make policy. And council comes at things from a political standpoint. You have constituents that you have to answer to. You've got that pressure that you need to deal with and we as administration need to be understanding with that as well. Our role is from a non-political standpoint, providing you with, with neutral, sound information to make those decisions. But we have to respect that ultimately, the council members as the elected representatives of the people make the final decisions. And then once those decisions are made by the council as a body, it becomes our responsibility as administration to carry out that direction. And I, I would hope that we would all welcome our staff to dissent when they feel that they need to and that we listen to them. But ultimately, we also need to respect that council does make those final decisions.
Excellent, thank you. And then finally, in your research of Frazier, have you identified any areas of opportunity that you would focus on either short-term or long-term? In terms of immediate things you would like to try to improve on or capitalize on if you were the city manager?
Well, I think one of the areas that continues to need to be looked at, you know, a few years ago, you were facing serious financial pressures. That has improved. You know, starting in 2018 and on, your financial situation has, has begun to, on an upswing and that's a good thing. But continuing to look at ways to, to collaborate, work with other communities on the provision of services, nonprofit organizations, faith-based organizations to help provide city services is important. I try, as a city manager coming into a position, I try not to make changes too quickly. I like to take a little bit of time to get a clear understanding of the organization, of the, the desires and the policy direction of the council, what the goals of the council are. I like to get a little bit of a feel for the community itself and then start to gauge what I may recommend to the council as some new opportunities, new areas to move into. Nobody likes change, quick change right off the bat, especially in municipal government. And it makes everybody nervous. And so it's important to take a little bit of time and, and to familiarize myself. But there are opportunities, just like we did back in 2009, 2010 with Seressa, reaching out to our neighboring communities, collaborating so that we could share services, dispatching services and eliminate our independent dispatching services. For East Point, for us, it resulted in well over $100,000 in annual cost savings. But looking at creative opportunities internally, I know that Frazier has experienced quite a bit of staffing turnover. That is something I would want to look at more closely to see what the, what the reasons are behind that. I, I know some of the reasons and some of the background. But I would want to look more closely at that. Make sure that we are working with council to build an organizational structure that is efficient and effective. And so tho- those are a couple, those are a couple of things that I, I think could be looked at. There are other things that are working very well. The investments that you're making in your park system is impressive. The maintenance of the community is impressive. So there are a lot of things that are working very well. But, but there are some areas that we could, we could definitely look for opportunities.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your time and answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Darren, what type of budgets have you, amount of total money budgets? What type of sizes have you dealt with?
I have prepared budgets as small as 1.3 million and budgets as large as 60 million. East Point's budget, all funds was 60, 60 million. Garden City's budget was 40 million. Ypsilanti's budget was 29 million. So, but I, I have prepared budgets as small as 1.3 million.
Okay. And day-to-day operations, how do you feel that the chain of command structure should be for day-to-day operations? And then kind of week-to-week and when you have influence by department heads and a separate member council? And obviously the residents, how do you balance that off? What's the best way do you think that you can handle that?
I, I think there definitely has to be a chain of command. The city manager has to be informed of, of what is happening, the communications that are occurring between staff members and council. But I do encourage open and unfettered communication between council and staff. As far as, for purposes of inquiry, council should always be able to reach out to the city manager or to department heads when you have a question about city operations, about how a department handles a particular issue, following up on a citizen concern that, that involves a particular department. I encourage those types of communications. I do want to know about those communications so that I can also be prepared if, if there are questions presented to me. But it is important that we communicate with each other. None of us have anything to hide. Administration doesn't have anything to hide when it comes to what we are doing administratively. We shouldn't at least. And, and council, again, as, as the elected representatives of the people, have a right to know how the city is being managed, what we are doing. So I do encourage that communication. I just, I, I do hope that the council respects the role of the city manager and keeps the manager in the loop on those communications. When there is work to be done, if there's something that needs to be assigned to a department, that should be coming through the city manager. The council should not be giving direction directly to department heads or to staff.
Good. Thank you. Other council members, Councilwoman Patrice Shornick.
Thank you, Darren, for coming and for applying for this position. We appreciate that. My question would be, have you had any experience with grant writing? And if so, were you successful in your grant writing?
Yes. So from my very first position with the city of Wixom as assistant to the city manager and director of community services, my job running the Parks and Recreation Department and senior services was to apply for grants, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. I also worked in the city manager's office on applying for grants under the Michigan Transportation Economic Development Fund. In Ypsilanti, I worked on a Chrissy grant, which is a, a federal grant for rail transportation because we were trying to reestablish our, our train stop at Depot Town. But in a number of those instances, the MNRTF, the LWCF, I was successful in obtaining those grants, a $300,000 grant to develop one of the parks in Wixom. LWCF grant to, to acquire property for additional parkland. Michigan Transportation Economic Development Category B funding, which is something that not a lot of municipalities know about. But, but MDOT does provide funding for local street, grant funding, for local street improvements on a competitive basis. And in Albion, we applied for a $250,000 grant to resurface some streets in, in some of our poorest neighborhoods.
Well, you didn't hit my son's neighborhood, let me tell you, because going down his street is a god-awful experience in Albion.
Oh my gosh.
It's right by the college.
Oh, yeah, there's still a lot of streets in that, in that community that need a lot of work. And, and I was working with the council trying to get them to understand that if you simply rely on Act 51 funding, you're never going to get there. So, but, so we were successful in getting that grant to resurface five streets in the northwest section of the city in one of the poorest neighborhoods of the community. I, I'm sure I'm missing, I'm missing a lot of them. But, but yes, I do have quite a bit of experience with, with grant writing and, and success in getting grants.
Okay, hold on one second because my battery is about to die. Do you have a plug for this? The computer I bought is brand new and it will not connect for Zoom. If I lose you, I will come back. My next question was, how much experience do you have with contract negotiations? Because we obviously have several unions.
In, in all of my positions, I have had, I have had some role in collective bargaining. And in some of the communities, I have been responsible for serving as chief negotiator for collective bargaining. I don't like being in that role because I think that puts the city manager in an awkward situation to sit directly across the table negotiating contracts with your own employees. But I don't shy away from that role if I have to be in that role. But so in almost all of my 30 years as a city and village manager, I have been responsible for negotiating contracts. Not only negotiating them, but also once we have, we have agreed to contracts and they've been ratified and approved by council, it's also my responsibility to, to administer those contracts and to be a step in the grievance process. And, and then sometimes, it's a rarity, but it does happen, having to go to mediation or arbitration on particular issues. Again, I would hope that's the exception, not the rule, but, but it does happen occasionally.
Your time is just watching. Thank you. My computer died, so. Those were, those were my, oh, my other question was about BSNA software. My other question was about BSNA software. Are you familiar with BSNA? And have you, are you using it in your current position?
Yes, I, I am very familiar with BS, BSNA. Starting, actually starting with East Point, we had a financial software system called Penimation. And we were still on the DOS version when I came in as city manager. And it, it was just awful. In East Point, we had a purchase order system as well through Penimation. But it was time-consuming, it was inefficient. And, and the council, on the recommendation of the finance director at the time, had just made a decision to invest in the Penimation Windows version. Penimation is a financial software package that was developed for Pennsylvania school districts. I, I still have not figured out any other community in Michigan that used the Penimation system. So I did convince the council to make the investments and move to the BSNA financial software. The general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, miscellaneous receivables. In East Point, we had the, the tax systems, the assessing system, the code enforcement and building permitting system. So we had, we ended up with a, a pretty comprehensive package in East Point. But, and then in Ypsilanti and Albion, they both have BSNA. And Blissfield also is working off BSNA. So BSNA has over 400 municipal clients. And they are one of the premier municipal financial software companies. And they have a very close relationship with IT Right, which I know you also contract with for, for some of your IT services. IT Right and BSNA work very closely together, so.
Okay, that's all I have, but thank you. While logging back on.
Thank you, Patrice. Any other council at this time?
You have five more minutes?
Okay, I'll go real quick.
Yeah, because I have a couple more too. So go ahead, Councilman Lessig.
All right, this is speed dating, interview style. Economic development efforts, do you see any opportunities? We have a fairly large industrial park. I, I see you have a varied resume with, of a large communities and small communities. And Ypsilanti is about the same size as us in terms of budget. I don't know about their industrial areas, but how would you approach economic development and supporting our business community?
Well, first of all, it would, I would have to find out what the council's goals are and what your feelings are on economic development incentives. That's the first step. Because whatever I do as city manager in terms of economic development has to flow from the support of the council to do it. I have worked in communities where councils are not supportive at all of tax abatements. And then other communities that are quite supportive of them and and, and understand that 50, 50% of, uh, increased taxable value um, is better than 100% of zero increase in taxable value. So, uh, but it, but my direction has to come from the council. Uh, that's one of the things that I would hope we would have a discussion on early on, uh, what your goals are, what you want to accomplish. Um, I've had experience in the full range of economic development tools. Uh, tax abatements, including industrial facilities tax abatements, uh, plant rehabilitation tax abatements, uh, commercial rehabilitation tax abatements, uh, commercial redevelopment tax abatements. Uh, in, uh, Lake Orient's downtown, I used both of those tools. Uh, and, uh, we were able to do a lot of redevelopment, uh, several million dollars in redevelopment in Lake Orient's downtown, as small of a community as it is, using those tools. Um, but also, um, you know, taking advantage of, uh, tax increment financing right through LDFAs, Brownfield Redevelopment Authorities, Downtown Development Authorities. Um, and, uh, in, when I was in Ypsilanti, uh, we partnered with Ann Arbor. We had the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti Smart Zone, uh, which targeted, uh, research, uh, helping to provide the capital for, uh, research products that were being developed at the University of Michigan and Eastern Michigan University and getting those to market, um, uh, in the private sector. So, uh, there's a, there's a lot of tools out there. MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, is invaluable in the support and assistance it provides to municipalities. Their CAT teams are awesome. Uh, I've worked in communities where we were mem, we were members of the redevelopment ready community. Uh, East Point's one of them. Um, uh, the Main Street Program, uh, Lake Orient and Blissfield are both, uh, Main Street communities. Uh, so, uh, I've had quite a bit of experience.
Thank you. We've got less than a minute left, and I want to be respectful of the, the clock watcher in the corner, so.
Time flies.
I'll pass. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Procham, what a Wiki.
Uh, just a quick question. Uh, what kind of research did you do into the city of Frazier before applying for this? And, uh, it's kind of a follow-up to, you know, uh, Mayor, Mayor's question in the beginning of why Frazier?
Uh, so, uh, I did quite a bit of research, uh, looked at the city charter, um, looked at the ordinance that created the city manager position, uh, because your position's not created by charter. Um, and to give me an idea of the structure of the organization and how the manager position fit in, um, I looked at your, your budget, including the budget presentations that were, uh, that were prepared and presented to council both last year and this year. I looked at your last four years of your, uh, financial statements, uh, to get an idea of the financial trends. Um, I drove through the community. Uh, I'm already somewhat familiar with Frazier in my years in McCombe County, but I drove through the community, uh, visited some of the parks, McKinley Park, Stephens, uh, some, uh, three or four of your neighborhood parks, um, drove through the neighborhoods. Um, and, uh, uh, what else did I, uh, a lot, just a lot of that, uh, the documents that I could, I looked at the website and visited all of the department webpages to get a better idea of what each department was doing and, uh, the staffing, uh, in each department, the best that I could glean from the, from the website. Uh, so those are a few of the things that I.
Ready, thank you. And thank you so much for your interest in Frazier and thank you for taking the time out today for us.
Thank you so much.
Do I have time, Amy?
To do.
One more question? Two, two quick questions?
I'm never gonna say no to you, Mayor, so.
See that? You can't say that though, Darren, that's for sure. Uh, just real quick, uh, when is your, if you move forward in this process, when would your availability be?
My contract with Blissfield, um, uh, dictates that I give two weeks notice.
Two weeks.
Um, I would like to give 30 days notice. They are just in the process, they've selected their finalists for the position. They are interviewing on May 20th. Um, and I would like to help see them through that transition until they've, they've got an administrator starting there. Um, but, uh, two weeks minimum, I would hope for 30 days.
Okay, and then the reverse of that is what type of transition timing would you think you would need it with our city manager? How many days or weeks or, or would you just jump right into it?
I would jump right in. Uh, I would not need any transition period.
Okay, that's all I have. I wanted to thank you tonight for coming out on behalf of council for applying for the position. Um, I'm sure you'll be hearing from Miss Amy Sell, uh, soon and, uh, uh, good luck and, uh, good night and, uh, please be safe.
Thank you, you too. Thank you so much, council. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you, we got a three-minute break. Mayor and council, I'm thrilled to introduce you, Richard Downey. And I think you will all enjoy getting to know him better and him getting to know you better as well. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mayor Carnegie.
Uh, good evening, Richard. How are you tonight?
I am excellent. Thank you very much for accommodating me. I really appreciate it.
Good, absolutely. Well, we appreciate you coming out and interviewing tonight for this position. Um, why don't you start off with just tell us a little bit about yourself as a formal introduction to all the council members and the audience, and then maybe a couple of your hobbies or things you'd like to do or like us to know about you. And then, uh, we'll open the floor with some questions and kind of go back and forth with some council people and we'll go from there.
Sounds good, sounds good. So, uh, I am a, can everybody hear me okay? I'm assuming so.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I am a, uh, 20-year local government professional. I've worked in, uh, I actually started my career in Mount Pleasant, Michigan. Uh, and in Claire, I was an intern, a graduate intern there. It's not even on my resume anymore. Um, then I went out to Elkhart, Kansas. If you're like, well, where's Elkhart? If you take your map of Kansas and go in the very southwestern corner where Oklahoma meets Colorado, that's where Elkhart was. I could actually walk to the three states. I was actually their first administrator there, worked there for three years. Uh, and then got a job in Rock Falls, Illinois, which is about two hours west of Chicago, uh, kind of straight west of Chicago. Uh, worked there for a while and then worked up in, uh, Cronin Wetter. I'm here now and I've been here for nine years. I've worked on budgets from $4 million to $17 million. Worked on departments from, you know, your water, your sewer, your public works, to broadband projects, to electric projects, because at Rock Falls, they had electric agency. Uh, I've worked with, I've hired many employees from department heads. Uh, I've always tried to keep my, uh, elected officials engaged and involved and make sure that they're informed of situations. I don't know about you, Mayor, but I'm assuming nobody runs to be surprised. And that's, you know, that's why I try to always make sure I respectfully keep everybody informed. Um, I usually, every community I've ever worked for, and if I was offered the opportunity, I would probably do the same, is I would try to live there, because in my opinion, to be approachable as a local official, you know, if I'm involved in the Lions Club or I'm shopping at the grocery store or I'm getting, you know, I'm getting the seven, seven mils on my tax bill like everybody else is, you know, that's, I'm more approachable that way, so. As far as, I think you said hobbies, things I do outside of work, things of that nature. I'm pretty busy at work actually right now, but, um, uh, my, I've got two kids, so my daughter is 16, my son just turned 13, so I have two teenagers. Uh, they both talk to me somewhat less now than when they were smaller. Uh, but I've been involved in Cub Scouts, Scouts BSA, which is a boys, formerly called Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. Um, and, uh, do all kinds of those type of things. Uh, was a Lions Club member, was a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So it's a lot of things that are related to work. Uh, and then, um, myself, as far as other hobbies, I've done computer, computer work, things of that nature. Like most of my computers that are in the house, I built myself, so. I think that gives you a little bit.
Well, good, you've actually answered a couple of my questions I had, uh, on the road, but. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, and I, I, I love your view about, uh, residency. I, I.
Well, and.
Means a lot.
If you and I are getting the same tax bill, or you know, you're, hey, you're gonna see the same seven mils or this, you know, I keep referring to that, but I, I've kind of done a little bit of research. Or I'm, you know, I'm getting the same service. It's easier for me to, I'm not really selling you, but it's easier for me to relate. Now, when you say, hey, did you get the, did you see the bill? Did you see this? And if I tell you, well, I live in, you know, I live in Winnebago County, or I live, you know, I'm from Toledo or whatever else, that, that doesn't really work, so.
Right. Oh, I understand. Um, after looking into and applying and, and maybe some, doing some research, uh, why Frazier? Why would you want to come here or even lift up your roots and bring them here to the city of Frazier?
There's a couple of things. Uh, it's kind of a three-point thing for me. As I talked about my kids, uh, I mean, we're looking at, uh, high school, college for my kids. There's a lot of opportunities. Uh, Frazier schools are rated very similarly to what we have now. Uh, my spouse, uh, she is, uh, she's taught at the, uh, college level in biology, so there's a lot of opportunities there for her. And then professionally, and this is the one, uh, kind of longer. I understand you're putting together a team and you've got some younger employees there. Uh, I've gone through, and I don't mean to offend anybody, gone through some kind of retrenchment and had to do a little bit of belt tightening. Honestly, I'm used to that, uh, and, uh, I'm kind of looking for a little bit of challenge. Not that I'm, my community where I'm not, where I am now, isn't challenging at all, it very much is. Uh, but, you know, I'd kind of like to get back to Michigan. Actually, my wife's family is from Lansing, right, it's out of Lansing, Brand ledge. So, uh, we'd be moving back home towards family as well, so. And again, I'm, I'm hoping I'm coming through, okay? I'm trying to speak up as much.
Yeah. Yeah, you are. Actually, uh, I graduated from Frazier, my kids went to school Frazier and had some of the same teachers I had, which is kind of weird, but.
Well, and you were, yeah, you had your kids when you were back.
Right, so I hope they kept the stories to themselves, but, uh, that's okay. Um, but now they've all grown up and gone on, so.
Sure.
Great. At this time, I will open it up to, uh, other council members at this time.
I don't know.
Any, me, me, mighty, well. Okay, Councilwoman Amy Bransky.
Sorry about that. Um, hello, Richard. Um, uh, just a couple of questions. Thank you for the video, um, presentation that you did, the telephone questions you answered, and then the, um, online questions or however that was. We've definitely got a lot of information about you.
Sure.
The one thing that I would like you to give me an example of, if you could, is sort of real-life applications of your management style. When you've had to do things that the residents don't like, or the employees don't like, or the council doesn't like, and vice versa, and how you apply your management style to the day-ins and day-outs of your job.
Okay, so it sounded like a three-part question? Is that, I mean.
Yeah, you're just like me. I write down everything, so I appreciate that. Bonus points.
Um, so, management style. Okay, let's, I'm gonna give you a couple of quick examples, because I want to keep this somewhat brief. All right, the big thing is, how do you deal with citizens when they're upset with something? Uh, such as water disconnections, electric disconnections, uh, permits, you know, you have to get a building permit to do this. Honestly, I always tell folks, first thing I say is, my first name is not Prince, I am not the king. The, the elected officials give me rules and we will abide by them. And I'm sorry if, you know, you've had some personal issues that you can't pay your water bill or your sewer bill or your electric bill, because I've done that argument more than once. But we've reached a point where we have to disconnect you. And, you know, you may be upset about it, but we're gonna do this, we're gonna cut it. And we've got all these other, you know, obvious, obviously show them what kind of programs we have that people can, like lie heaping things of that nature. So, when I, when the council wants to do something that maybe I disagree with, and I will tell you that it has happened more than once in my professional career. For example, my council in Rock Falls, they wanted to refund back sales tax to the local grocery store. They thought that was the way to bring in, because we lost our grocery store chain, I don't want to get too far into it. Uh, we, in Illinois, you get sales tax. And I basically ran the numbers that could show that we would lose money. The council was adamant that they were gonna do that. I said, at the end of the day, I advised them against it, but we did it. And when staff asked me, they're like, well, why didn't you stop that? It's not my job. My job is to give elected officials the best information you can. And then, at the end of the day, make sure they're making an educated decision. And if the board says, uh, you know, council says, we're gonna do this, we did this. Now, a year later, I could have went back and really spiked the ball when I showed financially how we lost money. But I basically walked them through and kind of said, okay, when we were looking at this, this is why I was saying this. And I basically made sure, again, I could have been, I don't know, very smart about it and say, oh, well, you know, you lost money and I told you so. That's not fair. I mean, they were, they were looking at a number of issues. Sometimes honestly, political issues are maybe not, and I hate to say this, not logical issues. But they're, you know, the, you're elected for a reason and you're there to represent the public. And sometimes we do things that maybe isn't the best. So, okay, so you talked about, uh, how do I enforce things? Uh, how do I, um, how do I do things that maybe the public won't like? How do I disagree with, uh, elected officials? I think I got them all, but was there any other, do you mind repeating if I missed any of them? Do you mind?
You, 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 half of it is just exactly, I can extrapolate, so you did a great job. Um, can you, um, explain for me any areas of opportunity you may have seen for Frazier in, if you were to get this job, things that right off the bat you know you would focus on based upon the research you've done to date? And I know, obviously, you don't have everything and all the information, but are there any areas where you see, um, immediate potential for improvement?
Um, I'm, I'm still kind of learning a little bit about it. And I guess, um, you might want to watch Amy as, you know, on the screen as I say this, but I know that you're outsourcing your human resources. And honestly, I'm a certified human resources professional. I have, I'm from SHRM. And Amy, I'm, I'm sorry to, well, and at the end of the day, because she said she was assisting with hiring for a clerk and some other positions. And again, I've done clerks, DPW, water, sewer, electric, lineman. Actually, in Kansas, I actually hired for police officers, because Kansas hiring for police officers is much different. But, so, I, there was, there were those type. But, so, I, there was, there were those type of things. I think the other thing is, I can tell you from just the staff meeting today, I think what I'd want to do is harvest a little bit of information from the staff. Because one of the things they kept asking me was, if we've got ideas, how are you going to react to that? Are you going to tell us no, or are you going to listen to us? So I know they have some, they have some ideas. I mean, the other thing is, you're in with a lot of other communities, are there off-taking of, can you share resources? Can you, can you contract services out? And I mean, sometimes, a lot of times, you know, employees don't want to say that is because, you know, we, right now, I contract out for my building inspection. For us to keep on, we could probably hire a full-time, but it's just easier to share with another community. And we're knocking down, this year, we're going to knock down about sixty-five new single-family homes. Last year, we did about sixty. And, yeah, we could definitely support one, but it was just more cost-effective to do it outsourced. And sometimes those are hard conversations, but if you're, I mean, I've gone through reduction in force, and I will tell you that I can remember the day, the time, the person I talked to when I had to lay them off. And at the end of the day, if I've got people that are pulling the cart, I'm going to fight like, fight like hell to check their jobs.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to ask, how big is the municipality you work for currently?
Fifty-two square miles.
Okay, and how many employees does it have?
So, full-time, or do you want to, do you want to do full roster?
Break it up, I guess, full-time.
So, full-time employees, I have twenty-two. That's full-time police, pay don't call fire, community development, which community development is building inspection. But it's, like I said, it's contracted out, water, sewer. And those are just employees we just hired this year because we just brought back in from a contracted service. So I'm actually arguing against my own idea. And then, let me see, water, sewer, clerk, finance, so amongst that, I mean, if you need to, I can name all of them.
Nope.
It'd take me a little bit, but.
No, 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 we only have forty-five minutes. My final question would be, what do you see as your weaknesses if you were to be the city manager at Frazier? And how would you overcome those in doing your job?
Well, and this is going to sound very simple, but I don't know you folks. And that is my weakness, I mean, I can tell what I read in the newspaper. I can tell what I see from, you know, the turnover in employees, things of that nature. And honestly, the way I've done it my entire career is, if hired, my first thirty days is me coming and meeting individually with you, with Mayor, with other people that are, that are the elected officials. And then also meeting individually with my subordinates. And then meeting with those people that have, that are stakeholders in the community. School superintendent, health, area of health system, major employers, major water and sewer users, those type of people. So the weakness is, I'm an outsider. I mean, I will tell you right now, I'm an outsider, when I say outsider, I'm from another state. I mean, I've worked in Michigan, and it's going to take me probably a couple of, couple of hours to basically get my civil, civics mind back in Illinois, or back in Michigan, I even said that there. You know, to kind of, to refresh, but it's not, it's something I've done a number of times.
Excellent, thank you so much for your answers, I greatly appreciate them.
No problem.
Councilwoman Blanky?
Thank you for coming this evening, Richard.
You're muted again.
She's muted.
Do you mind if I?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We've all learned Zoom very hard over the last year.
You have no idea.
It's still muted. It must be your.
I think your volume's just low.
Yeah, we'll fix it.
Okay.
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Lieutenant. How does your family feel, Richard? Obviously, you've relocated. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. You've relocated through your career several times. How does that work for you, logistically, as a professional and as a dad?
So what we do, what we did when I came here, I actually co, I actually go by myself. And then I kind of get things, I will be basically in your municipal center a lot more than I'll be at my rental unit. And kind of get things, because that's my, I mean, honestly, that's my honeymoon period. And what my wife and I have basically talked about is, I need the time to kind of focus, meet yourself, meet all the other people, find out the stakeholders, find out where the bodies are buried, all these other things. And, you know, that's, that's how we do it, that's how we've done it in the past. And then eventually, my family follows. My kids are both very well aware that new school system. And my son is very, I, I can say somehow he gets likability, I don't know who taught him that, but, so he gets along pretty well. And honestly, this last year has been, like, he hasn't been in school. He hasn't physically been in school. So it's been, I wouldn't say it's a, it's an easier transition, because they have friends here, things of that nature. But they've now, it's amazing how much they communicate without even physically seeing each other. Like my daughter and, my daughter and her friends are going to play Minecraft here a little bit, because that's, that's what they do. And all the kids get together and they all play together online until, you know, COVID passes, so.
Okay.
So, and I, I go back to that whole idea of, you know, I definitely want to, we would want to find a place in the city. I mean, and that's something that I don't, if I'm going to focus on the job, my wife's going to have to, my wife and I have already talked about, she would be looking at housing and everything else like that. So, and we're, I mean, we're understanding, and the other thing is, I will tell you that my mother-in-law, father-in-law, my mothers, or my, my, I guess that would be my grandmother-in-law, still over in Lansing. So it's not like, and I have a lot of friends in the harbor, I, I have a lot of friends up and down St. John's and all kinds around, so. I know a lot of people. Yeah.
Well, thank you. My second question would be, as a city manager and through the years of your experience and career, say if I asked you to rank the top three services within a city or township that you would fight to keep, what would be your top three?
Good question. The, I mean, people, public safety is usually a perception that people, you kind of have to look at it from what the citizens are utilizing. I think public safety is something that has to rank high, because people want to be safe. The other thing are services that provided water, sewer, utilities. Again, they want to, they want to be able to, they want to know that when they turn on the faucet, when they flush the toilet, that stuff is coming or going somewhere, they don't want to worry. The other thing is, and this is going to be probably one that you're going to be like, what? I'm going to say parks. And what I say that is, is people, I mean, the last year proved it, people want to live somewhere where they like. They want to, they can live pretty much anywhere, they can work anywhere they want, but they want to have neat things and, you know, they want to go on walks, they want to be able to go to movies under the stars, they want to do these type of things. So parks is not something you forget about, and I guess I don't want to short, you know, building inspection, all these other things, but you said top three, and there's my top three, so.
Okay, no, and I, I appreciate your honesty with it and your explanation. And I think you're pretty much on par with what we feel here in Frazier. So I thank you for your time and have a safe trip going home. Oh, you are home, right?
Yes, I am, I'm in my, in my kitchen, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, bye-bye.
I don't know if you like our water bills though, if you're here in our city, that's for sure.
It'd be, well, and I understand you're, you're, you're buying wholesale from, from Macomb County, right?
Yeah, yeah, it all comes from Detroit, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Patrice Sharnak?
Great, thank you very much. Yep, so, one of my questions is, how much hands-on experience do you have with the actual budget? How much do you actually put into it, or do you just leave it all to your finance director?
No, I, my budget when I was in Rock Falls was seventeen million, which included the electric department, broadband, a couple of other things. Housing grants, things of that nature, I was individually involved there. Cronin Wetter, where I am now, I'm probably, we do it about fifty percent. I will tell you, the way I do the budget is, we start, not with you folks, offense, I start at the department level and go and talk to the departments about what do they need next five years. I don't look at what's due next year, we have to be looking far enough down the road so we can save. And the other thing, I mean, I've seen, I've seen the document that you have for your budget, and if you wanted to see mine, I'm, I will tell you that numbers are good, text is better. And it's just so people can understand and kind of read it and understand where things are going. And I, I don't want to take anything away, because I know you've had some turnover there and some other things. But I would say, my, I, if you had, if I had to give you a percentage, sixty-five percent, maybe sixty-four. So, I mean, I'm not going to say I'm going to micromanage, you know, hey, is that, is that calculation in Excel right, things of that nature, no. But at the same time, I'm going to look through all the line items, I'm going to find the one that's, why is this two-point-five million dollars and it should be twenty-five hundred dollars? So, and, I mean, the other thing is, at the end of the day, it's my budget, you folks are approving it though. So I have to go in and explain it to you, and when you say, how come we don't have a skid steer for the parks program this year we, we thought we were going to need? It's not going to be the DPW guy that's going to be standing, it's going to be me, so, so I should know why it works, why it doesn't work and what we're doing.
Excellent. Have you had any grant writing experience, and if so, have you been successful?
Yes, ma'am, I've, I've written grants in every community I've ever worked for. I'm going to quickly go through them, because I don't want to bore you with all of them. Recycling grant back in Kansas was the first recycling grant to go to the western Kansas community. I did brownfield rehabilitation grants, which is a US EPA grant. So there was assessment grants and there were cleanup grants when I was in Rock Falls. That was over about a million dollars. I've done housing rehabilitation grants, which those are really neat, that's a CDBG program that we did in Illinois. That if you lived in your home, I could do forty thousand dollars of repairs in your home, and if you lived there for ten years, you didn't have to pay a dime back. One of the best programs I've ever done. And every state does CDBG a little bit differently, so could I do that there? So those housing grants, I've applied for FEMA, equipment grants, applied for, there's Wisconsin Public Safety Grants, things of that nature, so I won't get too far into that. So, big ones, small ones, I will tell you, I will give you the secret to grants, and this is a free one, but I actually learned from Central Michigan. If you want to write a grant, you call up the person that is receiving the grant and you ask them questions that you probably already know the answer to. Why? Because you're building a relationship there and you understand what they're looking for. So, and I'm not saying cheat the system, I'm saying clarify things. And that's always worked for me, so. And again, I can give you specifics on numbers.
That's great. That's, that's good elaboration. My next question was, with as far as contract negotiations, have you had a lot of experience with contract negotiations? Because of course, we do have several unions that are here in our city.
Yep, and I noticed that three of the contracts are signed until 2022, and then one is still open. If I, I think, so, I've negotiated police, full-time police, full-time fire department, full-time electric, which they incorporated, it was IBW, so it was actually electric, water, sewer, streets. And then I've negotiated full-time, full-time police here. I did have my National Public Employer Labor Relations Certification, which is, it's a lot of classes, it talks a lot about Fair Labor and Standards Act and things of that nature. I will tell you that since I've come to Wisconsin, I did not renew my license there. Because Wisconsin's laws are a little bit different, like your Teamsters contract I read today, it is what? Oh, I think it's fifty-five pages. My Teamsters contract is one page. Because they can only, they're only allowed legally to negotiate on wages, that's it. So, and when I got here, I was like, where's the rest of your guys' contract? And they're all looking at me alone, that's all there is. So we can spend the ten minutes to talk about what you're going to give us for a wage, and that's it. So, and I've, I've led the negotiating team, I don't know how far you want to get into it, I've led the negotiating team. I've worked as part of the negotiating team, I've worked with and outside of legal counsel. Sometimes some communities like to have legal counsel in the room.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's something that if that's what the city council prefers, that's fine, I've worked with that. I can tell you what an unfair labor practice is, I can tell you hard negotiations. I can tell you I've never been threatened, I can tell you I've never been threatened, but IBW has a certain place in their heart for me. I don't know, I shouldn't say their heart, but.
Yeah, I got what you're saying, I'm picking up what you're throwing down. And then the next question I had for you is, are you familiar with BSNA software?
That would be your accounting software that you have?
Well, it's more than just our accounting, it is.
Like your, it's your payroll and everything else.
It's, yeah, it's kind of the whole.
The whole sheet match, yeah, it's the one thing that you're going to find that I am not familiar with. I've worked with probably six different, different accounting systems, from civic system to workhorse to municipal accounting systems. I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm a pretty quick learner when it comes to accounting systems.
Okay. Those were all the questions I had, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Patrice. Richard, just a couple of things, in our form of government here, obviously, being a city manager who runs a day-to-day operations and is responsible for, for moving the council's ideas and things forward and, and doing the budgets.
Sure.
How do you handle as far as when you have, you know, a very strong-willed council, very educated council? You've got citizens who always have their views and viewpoints, and then you have department heads that, you know, have their opinions and their experiences, and when they all kind of clash, how do you handle that as far as a manager?
Okay, so if, if there's, excuse me, pardon me, because I because I choke on the question. I mean, at the end of the day, my job is to give you as elected officials the best information I can get. What I do is, say if the department heads are telling me, we really shouldn't get rid of Public Act Thirty-three because of, and here's financial. My job is to make sure that you get that information. And then if citizens are sitting in the audience or board members are saying, no, we needed to get rid of Public Act Thirty-three because it's too much on the taxes. I need to make sure you have all the information that you need, and at the end of the day, if you say that's the way we're going, I turn around and I take that message from you folks as the elected officials, and I turn around and explain it to the staff, here's what we're going to do. I will, you know, sometimes I have to represent, I will tell you that if, if for some reason, everything I say is exactly right, I'm not doing my job. There's going to be days that you and I, or, you know, if I'm hired, you and I, other board members, and it's not personal, it's just, I need to bring you the best information I have and I need to give you an opinion. The other thing is, I, that's the one thing I, I would have to learn is, how much of my opinion do you want? You know, do you want a recommendation on everything that comes forward? Should we buy this truck? Should we do this thing? Should we, because that's what my board does where I am now. Everything that comes before the board has a recommendation from rich or department, depends on where it is. So, I've worked with a lot of different members, I've worked with very educated board members, I've worked with board members that are just coming on and really didn't know much about the election system at all, other than I've just been elected. My first meeting, am I supposed to sign for a four-million-dollar bond? Yeah, yeah, that's, that's democracy, that's what you got to do. I mean, what I've found is the best course of action is, again, I go back to that, meet with everybody individually, make sure elected officials are on board. Make sure I find out what's your needs and, you know, where are, where are you going to be? And, you know, making sure I understand what are your hot-button points, so. So I've, I've done it for a while, so.
It's just a quick.
Go ahead.
I was just going to give you a quick scenario where, you know, I tell my neighbor, who is a senior citizen, said, don't worry about it, I'll take care of it, I'll get that tree cut down in your backyard. And I call Mr. Ragsdale and say, Mark, go by next week and cut that tree down. Is that, is that a good way to operate?
No, it's, I, well, ye. I will tell you that it looks like Mr. Ragsdale's not as well. Okay, so, I, I will tell you, legally, well, I'm going to tell you a couple of things. I would advise not to do that for, one, you're not acting as a body, two, and I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Somebody on YouTube.
Mark, Mark needs to be muted.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, and, I mean, two, you know. you know, if you as a single board member are talking, legally you have to be very careful because what if you say something like remove the stop sign at First Avenue? And then, you know, you didn't have board authority and you could legally be in trouble because you as a single board member tried to take action that really isn't legally allowed. The other thing is all of a sudden staff doesn't know where to look. And if they're constantly trying to avoid problems and okay, cut this tree down, no, plant that tree. Take the stop sign out and no, put the stop sign back. I mean, that's what professional management is. And I will tell you honestly, I've had that discussion, argument, conversation with many elected officials. Sometimes people go, well, I'm elected. I should be able to tell them to do anything. And I say, yes, but you, the only person that you technically hire is me. And if you want something done, then you come and tell me and I'll come back and tell you, okay, we'll get that tree looked at. We'll get that sign taken down. We'll get that water out of the ditch, those type of things. But we've got to do it a certain way.
Yep. Well, that's perfect. I could tell by the first impression on your face, that's where you're going and that's good. So.
Well, and, I mean, that's going to be something that honestly, you're going to want to know, well, chief, why did we buy an extra LED for a cruiser? You just want to make that phone call. That's all you want to know. You don't want to know anything else. There's, there's going to be small things, but big things, you're going to probably want to know why. So.
Other council members.
Mike, you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Councilman Lessig.
Yeah. Hello, Richard. Nice to see you. My questions, you, you were very thorough in your answers. I appreciate that. You mentioned that you like to get, reach out to the community, it's community stakeholders. And we have a fairly large industrial park for, especially for a community of four square miles. How would you approach economic development where we have, it's probably built in the seventies and the eighties? And it could use a refresh. It needs some infrastructure improvements. We want to, how would you approach economic development to our business and industrial sectors?
I kind of use a, it's a fishing analogy, so you have to excuse my kind of colloquial word. But it's, it depends on what the board feels comfortable, what you feel like landing. My, my approach would be reach out to your employers that you have in the community and try to see what we can do to add them, to have them add one more person. And I know, wow, that doesn't seem, gosh, don't we really want Target or don't we really want this big stuff? Honestly, in my professional opinion, best way to do is what can we do to add one more, two more? What can we do to that? Because if you're working with your local businesses and you're trying to have them bring in one or two more, or you're hearing what they're saying, or you're trying to meet their needs, that, they will talk to their friends that have businesses that are looking for sites. And they will say, you know what? He came to me and he didn't say, get all this junk off the yard and just come down the hammer. He came into me and he talked to me about what are the concerns that I have? Why are my electric rates so high? How come my water pressure drops off at 2:00, 2:00 AM? You know, those type of things. Or, and if it's a matter of refreshing, I mean, there are little things that honestly you can do in the right of way, things of that nature that may seem kind of very cutesy. Sinage, bushes, things up. But that's what sometimes when people are looking for sites, that's what you kind of have to do. And sometimes there are going to be bigger things. So I, I have hunted for the big, big fish. And honestly, it is hard to do and everybody does it. And unless you're going to open up the pocketbook, you're not going, oh, I want the Amazon distribution center. Yeah, that'd be great, but you plan on putting out $2 million just to, just to, just to start the conversation? That's not frugal with your money.
Yeah, well, we, we don't have that ability to do that. But the county economic development team does partner with us and has on other projects. So you would be comfortable. Sounds like you'd be comfortable with talking to any of them. How do you approach? I don't know if you answered this. You probably already did. But how do you approach? How do you approach the public? You're standing in the hallway of City Hall. Somebody comes up to you and says, I've got a problem with this water. But you mentioned turn offs and shut offs, but on a day-to-day basis, are you approachable to the public?
I would say, I would say yes. I will, I've, during college and I worked in the private sector. And one thing I learned from there is kind of key is responses always happen within 24 hours. And the phone always gets answered in three rings. I know that sounds very simple. But when, when people, I mean, even if you, if you say to me, how come we don't have a stop sign at First Avenue? Maybe I don't know. Maybe I need to get ahold of Mr. Ragsdale and ask him. Or maybe I need to get ahold of somebody. What I do is first is I take the phone call and say, okay, Mr. So-and-so, I understand you have a question about stop sign. Let's get some information. And let me call you back within 24 hours. Or if it's not me, it's going to be one of my department heads. And the other thing is I will tell everybody that's on my staff, it's 24 hours, it's three rings. Even if it's, if it's something that you know you're going to get screamed at, you just shut off my water, I'm out of electric, all my food's going to go bad, we answer that phone. And at the end of the day, we don't set policy. We enforce policies given to us. And sometimes I have to say, this is what the city council said we're doing. You have to get a permit for this. You have to get a permit for that. You get shut off after so many times. So I, I would say I'm pretty approachable. Sometimes I, my staff is like, you're going to go talk to that guy? Yeah, that's going to happen. And sometimes have I ever been threatened? Yeah, I've been called a racist. I've been called all kinds of things when I'm shutting off people's electric. But at the end of the day, that's what the rule is.
You're enforcing an ordinance. So.
Well, and then, then when the guy reaches into his pocket, pulls out a wad of hundreds and pays his bill, it's like, why did you argue? Why did you do that?
Yeah. Hey, I want to let Mr. Winawicki or Councilmember Winawicki get a question in. So I'll let you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Two-minute warning.
Yep.
Lightning round. Got it.
So, Richard, first I want to thank you for taking the time and, and also expressing interest in the city of Frazier. You've answered so many of my questions. One of the first ones I would have asked you is what kind of research did you do on the city? And you, you kind of blew me away with all your responses. So.
I can keep going if you want. I.
No, I, I can tell you, you've been very thorough. What, what was your impression after meeting all the department heads and speaking with people today throughout the city? What was your, what was your overall impression?
I will say it is a, is a very young, and when I say it's a very young crew as far as they don't have a lot of time with you. And honestly, I had a lot more questions than I was used to about, but will you listen to us? Will you represent us? Will you back us up? And I think there's a little bit of trepidation there. And I mean, I'm looking at the track record of the manager there. And I think they just want to make sure, they want to see somebody that's going to be there for a while. And I honestly, if you look at my resume, there's nine, there's eight, there's three. You know, there's, it's a long track record. If you're thinking this guy's going to come over here and he's going to work here for two years and he's going to leave, that's not me. Because honestly, I'm probably, I will tell you right now, and if anybody tells you difference, they're lying. Or someone to do a great job for you, they're going to need six months to a year to get the flow of things, to find out what you need, to find out how things are going. And if they tell you, I'm going to hit the ground running, running away from us is what they should be telling you because that's not, that's not true. Because there's going to, you're going to have to learn the civics. There, this is the industrial park person that has a little, a couple of issues. This is the, you're going to have to learn all those things, you know, and it's going to take time. And for me to look through your audit, or me to look through your newspaper and everything else, I can learn some, but I can't learn it all. So.
And I'm so sorry, but I know we're going to have to, I know.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry I went a little bit long on that one. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Richard, just two quick ones. I can go real quick. Is availability? How much time would you need if you were to move forward with the city?
So my employment contract with the village of Cronin Wetter currently says I have to give them 30 days.
30 days?
30-day notice. And I would definitely do that.
Okay. And then what type of transition would you like to see on our end if this position was offered to you? With the current city manager or anything else?
I think I would want to, I mean, I would want to talk, are you talking to like people to talk to or?
As, as transition with the current city manager to understand his role or what he's been doing to update and.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I tried to reach out to him today. Unfortunately, he was busy. I would want to probably talk to him. I don't, are you saying, do I need like someone to be, be in my office for two weeks or something like that?
Anything like that, yeah. What's your?
I mean, I can tell you right now, probably a couple of meetings, a couple of times. I don't know because he's going to come in, we're both going to be sitting there looking at each other like, okay, who should be stirring the pot? Or who should be doing this? It's, it's a small kitchen. I mean, and I hate to say it, is I've done the job more than once.
All right. Well, on behalf of city council, I want to thank you for your time tonight, for participating, for your interest in the city of Frazier. Good luck to you. And if you have any questions, please let Amy Sell know. She can get them to us in the meantime. Otherwise, have a great night and stay safe, please.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now what's the game plan all?
What's that? I just had a, I had, sort of the citizen participators, we don't do interviews. I just had an open discussion time. If there was any open discussions, if anyone had any points they'd like to make or questions for Ms. Sell or understanding which processes preferred going forward.
Amy is not on the call or on the Zoom.
Right, right. She dropped off.
Yeah, well, she, the, between her and I think Mary forwarded us assessment forms that were to
Right, yeah.
fill out and get turned into them as soon as possible. And, and I'm sure she's going to tally all those results with all the, the responses from the interviews with all the different individuals that, within the city that, that each candidate spoke with.
And then we'll come back and vote next week?
Yes, I was hoping that we could have this actually on the agenda on Thursday.
Yes.
To, to move forward. But please feel free to ask the questions you want with Ms. Sell. If you want more questions to ask go forward. I said the same with Ms. Coco not being here. I believe she's going to watch the tapes. But if she has any questions, she can quickly send those off to Ms. Sell for them. I still had the one from the first interview, but we want to make the right decision here. We want everyone's input as thorough as, as best we can and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I would just say thank you. I'm blown away by the caliber of the candidates. And these were just the top four. I'm so excited to see what everyone thinks and hear input from the employees and the, and the administration and the residents and my fellow council members. So.
It actually gets exciting, doesn't it?
Yeah.
If I, if I could interject real quick, we're actually waiting on this Zoom for the ZBA starts at 7 o'clock.
So, yep.
Right. So motion to adjourn.
Please, thank you.
Yep. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries. Good night, everybody.